The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 City Council meeting on February 19, 2020. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go. Vice Mayor Parlier.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
To comply with the Brown Act, we'll receive public statements now. Please limit your comments to the closed session item only at this time. All public comments on the workshop items will be received after staff presentations. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per subject. Are there any public statements? Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under Workshops, Item A, Status Update on City Efforts to Address Homelessness Related to (1) Calcot Purchase Agreement, (2) Contribution Agreement with Kern County to Support Expenses Related to the Operation of the County Low Barrier Shelter at 2900 M Street, $500,000, and (3) Staff Dedicated to Addressing Homelessness.
Thank you, Ms. Kitchen. Proceed when you're ready.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. Given the packed house, I'll try to keep it brief. Could we get the presentation, please? We've lost the mouse. Let me grab it. Okay. So, the purpose of the presentation today is just to provide you with a status update on the things we've been working on since the council meeting about three weeks ago on January 22. We'll go over the three action items that your council took in relation to the emergency shelter projects, and we'll also talk about some staffing considerations due to a referral and a request from the Vice Mayor. So first, an update on the Calcot Purchase and Sale Agreement. Over the last three weeks, we've had some discussions with the property owners related to some minor adjustments to the draft agreement that council approved on January 22. These discussions resulted in some minor, nonsubstantial adjustments to the contract related to timeframes, inspections, and so forth. And that agreement was signed by the President and CEO of Calcot, and it is going through for all the normal signatures, so we're on track to open escrow. A couple of highlights of that purchase and sale agreement. It does require that the city complete its separation of utilities, water, and electrical by April 30, that the seller complete the necessary repairs to the roof, floor, paint, fences, coolers, and heaters by April 30, and that we close escrow by April 30. So, April 30 is a big date, and then from there, the seller has until May 31 to turn over the remaining portion of the office area of the property that they will occupy. That's shown here in red, so the city will have access to a majority of the site starting now, that we've opened escrow, and Calcot will occupy some of that office space there in the middle until the 31st. During our due diligence period between now and April 30, the city will be working on inspections. Nick and his crews are already out there. Our building department's already out there, looking at the warehouses, doing our Phase 1 survey, doing the lead and asbestos investigations, all the typical things that you would do during an escrow period. So, those are all moving forward now. We've also had the opportunity to walk the site several times with an architect by the name of Brian Nelson to start doing some of the fine-grained space planning that's needed in order to convert this facility to the Homeless Navigation Center. A little bit about the architect, Mr. Brian Nelson. He's someone that came to us through our research. He has over 35 years of experience. He has designed and modeled over 90 rescue missions across the country. He specializes in the more high-level space planning concept. So, he's giving us some preliminary layouts that we'll look at in consultation with our service provider friends at the mission and at the homeless center and others to make sure that we're going in the right direction with the renovation and remodel. These are some photos of some of the other projects he's worked on. This is the mission at Santa Barbara, a very well-known and successful facility. This is another one over in, let's see, Great Falls Rescue Mission. This facility is interesting because it's a 40,000-square-foot facility that they were able to fit on a 25,000-square-foot lot. It does have a gym and over 100 beds. So, Mr. Nelson has a wide variety of experience in designing shelters to accommodate all types of needs. Again, this would just be the initial phase of space planning. Once we have a more firm idea of what the layout will be, we will move forward in hiring a local architect to do a design-build through our normal process to complete the actual work. Another important thing that's happened with the Calcot facility that we are now calling the Bakersfield Homeless Navigation Center is that we did get that RFP out last week for the operator. This is really crucial, really important. We did a 30-day RFP period so that we can get them onboard and help have them on retainers so they can help us with that space planning as well. So, that RFP period will close on March 13, and we expect to have an operator selected by the end of March. A couple of things that are of note in that RFP, it really goes into sort of the granular detail about what we're expecting out of that professional operator. We talk about the needs for facility management, facility operations, and maintenance. We also talk about the needs for the meal program, the laundry services, creation of that referral network that we've talked about several times, use of a coordinated entry system, case management, housing navigators onsite, development of a good neighbor policy, and development of a professional complete operating plan at the site. We also have a provision for subcontracted services within the RFP. We expect to contract with Kern Medical and Kern Behavioral Health to have mental and medical health services onsite. We're meeting with the executive leadership of both of those organizations to work through those details now. We're also hoping to have veteran services onsite, job training programs, potentially partnerships with Bakersfield College, CSUB, the Adult School, and others to have educational services on the site, and more. Moving on to the second item that your council took action on on the 22nd was that agreement with the county to provide $500,000 to them to help with the first year of operation of their facility on Golden State. City staff did draft an agreement and send it over to the county. The county came back with a few minor edits, and we've all agreed upon the terms. A few highlights from that agreement that were requested by council, specifically that the contribution be for operating costs and not for capital, that the county maintain location data for all the incoming clients of that facility, and that the county provide an initial accounting report within 90 days of opening or by August 31, whichever comes first. And then finally, that the county is to provide a final accounting report of that first year in February of 2021, and that'll be right in time for our next budget cycle. And if they are going to request a second year of operating support, they would need to do so at that time. So, those details are included in that agreement. The third and final action that the council took on January 22 was council-directed staff to prepare two neighborhood improvement plans. We are working through the details of those now. They will focus on street repairs, curb gutter sidewalk, street lighting for the areas surrounding the two sites. Again, that's 1900 East Brundage and 2900 O Street for the county facility. This is a little bit of detail on what we're looking at so far around the city's site. We would use CDBG money to provide curb gutter and sidewalk to the entire residential neighborhood to the west, as shown here in yellow. And we're also looking at opportunities to do repaving of Brundage Lane and MLK, and also add street lights, curb gutter and sidewalk where needed in those areas. And then around the county facility, we're looking at opportunities to do street repairs and street light improvements to the streets that bound to both sides of that facility, as shown here in red, and that's M Street, O Street, and a portion of, I don't have my contacts, and I think that's James Road. Is it James, Nick? I think. So, it's in that area right there. And then the last thing to update you on is Councilmember Parlier requested that we provide some information on the city resources that are going towards addressing homelessness overall. So, we took a look, and this is a little busy, but this is a slide of the projects that city staff are working on in relation to homelessness. So, of course, there's construction of the new Bakersfield Homeless Navigation Center on Brundage Lane. We're helping the Bakersfield Homeless Center expand their facility with 40 new beds. We're also helping the mission of Kern County expand their facility with 40 new beds. We're also providing the background detail for that $500,000 to support Kern County's new homeless shelter. And I'd like to note, between those four projects, that's 380 new emergency beds that'll be coming online in 2020. So, that's a major accomplishment for Bakersfield, for Kern County, and for our whole community. City staff is also managing four separate employment contracts with the Bakersfield Homeless Center, managing the downtown clean teams, the rapid response teams, the problem-oriented policing patrols, working with the DA's office on the Community Prosecution Partnership. We sit on the executive board of the newly-formed Kern Regional Homeless Collaborative, and we also manage federal, state, and local homeless grant programs. So, on the right there, you can see all of the city departments that are involved with that, and we really thought through it and looked, and it is all of the city departments that are involved with these programs. Pretty much every single person on your city staff plays a role in it somehow, so there are quite a few resources going to that. So, we also looked at how does this compare to our other cities. We looked at our 10 comparables and added a couple of others that we know are dealing with homelessness. This chart here shows the city on the left, whether or not they have dedicated, specific staff that are specifically working on homelessness, and then the number of staff addressing homelessness, and then how those numbers relate to their overall pit count numbers, that is, the number of homeless people in their community, and how that reflects as a percentage of their population. So, as you can see here, San Francisco has the highest number of homelessness at 8,335 people, which is close to 1% of their population, and they have 250 staff that are actually dedicated to addressing homelessness. There's some nuance to that number. This includes both a separate homelessness department within their structure, and it also includes staff that are dedicated to homelessness within the mayor's office. Then the city of Sacramento comes in second in terms of the number of homeless individuals within their community at 2,800, and they have nine staff dedicated. But what you'll see here, as you look at this chart, that of the 13 cities that we looked at, only four have city staff that are specifically dedicated to addressing homelessness, and of those four, three of them also act as the continuum of care or as the housing authority. I'm getting into the weeds a little bit, but here in Bakersfield, we have a separate continuum of care that consists of over 30 members. That's that Bakersfield Kern Executive Homeless Board, and then we also have a separate housing authority of Kern County. So, some nuances to look at when we're thinking about staffing, and those are highlighted there. So, some takeaways from this is that most of the other cities in California do not have fully dedicated staff that are addressing homelessness yet, but that may change over time as we see more and more resources being dedicated to this, both at the local, state, and federal level. Another thing to keep in mind is that the city of Bakersfield recently contributed $150,000 to the Bakersfield Kern Regional Homeless Collaborative to address homelessness. That new nonprofit will hire three or four of its own staff, and actually just hired an executive director to kind of help shepherd some of these regional programs. Another big strain on city staff for the last year has been working on the emergency shelter project. That obviously takes a great amount of time and resources, but we're hoping that once that operator comes onboard and the facility actually opens at the end of this year, that some of that work will shift to that new operator. So, there will always be city staff that are dedicated and working on this to some degree, but we do think that there will be a change once the shelter actually is up and running. So, those are things to think about, and information for your consideration, just kind of an overview of where we're at now and our next steps ahead. So, obviously, just last month, the council approved the purchase of the Calcot site. We have that operator RFP out now, and we expect to begin initial tenant improvement and construction activities next month. We hope to select the operator by the end of next month or early April, engage in the full construction by May, and have the new facility opened by fall of this year. And with that, that's an update on where we're at.
Thank you, Jackie. Nick, did you have a clarification?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Thank you. Just one small clarification. On some of the items, the water and electrical utilities for the Calcot facility are currently on a private system. So, the slide indicated that it will be separated on April 30. Actually, it will be April 30 of 2021. We will have a year to separate those utilities and get onto a public system. Just want to make sure that was clarified.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
And before you take action, remember that we're going to open this up for public comment if there is anyone here that would like to speak on the item.
Thank you, Richard. Is there anyone from the public that would like to talk on this item? Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Ms. Kitchen, thank you so much for all of your work. I know it's been a heavy lift for you and for many folks within the city to not only respond to the particular request regarding the shelter, but all of the various responses that we've established over the last few months. Can we go back to the slide regarding the various different programs?
Yep.
Or projects, great. So, I do imagine, once we have a service provider to manage the day-to-day operations, that the amount of time from folks in City Hall will be reduced, but there will still be a need to coordinate all of these various different projects. So, we just allocated in Budget and Finance yesterday an allocation for Flood Ministries to do street outreach work. So, the question is, how does that then, how do they then work with the homeless shelter? And I understand it, you know, academically, but from the day-to-day standpoint, what is the plan, and this is not a question for you to answer today, but longer term, what is the plan for us to really coordinate all of these different efforts and monitor how these different projects are working together?
I think that's a great question. So, as part of the PSVS budget, we did include two additional associate planners within the Development Services Department, and then specifically within the Community Development Unit of that department. They were intended and stated in that budget proposal to be fully committed to addressing homelessness. Mr. Boyle is here. I believe we've just hired those last two CD planners, or they're in
The last two CD planners will go to advertisement on Monday, so we should have them on staff. We're hopeful to have them on staff sometime in April.
Great. So, what those two planners will do is they will help take on some of the burden of managing those programs that you just mentioned, Councilmember Gonzalez. So, some of the HUD programs, we're also seeing tremendous investment at the state level in homelessness and more funding coming to the city, through the city, coordinated by the city, and the tiny but mighty team in Development Services has been managing a lot of that. So, it's the hope that these two new planners will help with some of that day-to-day. But beyond that, there will still be a need for overall management and oversight because, as shown by this list, those programs are one part of what we do at the city, something that we've seen in one or two other cities outside of California, is that there's one person, usually within the manager's office, that's kind of designated as the homeless coordinator. We have seen that in a couple of places, such as Washington and Oregon. So, that may be something to look at in the future if there's a need.
Okay. Thank you. And then finally, I wanted to see if we can get an update regarding the Community Prosecution Program?
I would defer to the attorney's office on that one.
Thank you, Jackie. Vice Mayor, Councilmember Gonzalez, as you recollect, the council approved the $300,000 to the district attorney's office, and I believe that Ms. Zimmer or someone from her staff is due to come and make some type of presentation to you during the budget process.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Freeman.
Well, Councilman Gonzalez asked my first question for me, but I still have a question. Is there any one person right now who is in charge of coordinating all of the various homeless activities, such you've shown, or is there not one person?
I guess you could kind of say I'm taking on that role right now, among other things.
At least temporarily.
Yes. It takes a lot of people, but...
You're the coordinator, okay. Because clearly, there's a need for someone.
Yes. It is a full-time job in and of itself.
Yeah, and fairly high up in the city manager's office.
Right.
My other question, it's a technical question. Do you know, do we, my understanding of the law is that we cannot ask a person to move off public property if they're camping in front of a store or whatever unless we have a warm bed waiting, I think, is, you know, right that second. Do we, and I see homeless people all over town. You know, I keep, you know, they're at freeway off ramps. I mean, every day, they're at the same places. I keep wondering, do we have any beds, or are we completely full so that we couldn't ask that person to leave anyway? Because there's not, is there not one bed available in Bakersfield? I don't know if you know, but I keep wondering if there's no point even approaching them because we couldn't put them in a bed anyway.
Yeah, and so, that's a great question, Councilmember Freeman. The two shelters have around 400 beds between the two of them today. On any given day, close to 400 are full. So, for the most part, we do not have a bed ready and available. That's the reason that we're helping both of the existing shelters add new beds, and that we're moving forward and building a new shelter as well. I think what you're referencing is a Ninth District decision, and again, the attorney's office can probably provide better detail on that than I can, but the goal is, is that once the new beds come online, we'll have more options.
If I could just suggest, once we have availability, that we have some sort of a program, I don't know if it's with the police or who it's with, but to spot all of these people that I see, I mean, there's always someone at the Panama Freeway off ramp, standing, stopping. It's actually dangerous for everybody. And in the medians on Ming Avenue and at the entrance of the marketplace, if we have some hotline or something that someone can go out and talk to these people and ask them, you know, do they need help? And if they refuse help, at least that they would move off. But I think we have to make that call first. Do we have the bed before we can even ask them to move? That, if that, I see.
And...
Janie's shaking her head. I'd like some explanation of that because I don't really understand the law.
And I'll try to explain a little bit, and the Chief of Police is here as well. But right now, the police department does ask those questions anyways, and we've been aware of that Martin v. Boise case for quite some time, and have been working closely with code enforcement and the police department to make sure that we have all the proper procedures in place so we do not violate the order from that court. So, code enforcement and police both do a good job of keeping track of these people. They keep track of the number of contacts, so we know where to find them. We know how to send services their way, and we try to already have that holistic approach to the problem. And as Ms. Kitchen stated, this will be another very useful tool, not just in helping on the enforcement side, but helping to get them off the street permanently.
Do we have a hotline to call if, if I see someone that I could call and say, could someone go talk to this person? Is there such a thing?
I would say now that the hotline is the two existing shelters or Flood Ministry, there's a variety. There's kind of a network of people that you can call, but one of the goals with the new Bakersfield Homeless Navigation Center is that, and it's included in our RFP, we want to create a more formal referral network. So, using an app, using technology, we want to have kind of a count of where all the beds are, who has an opening, who's the best shelter to take in individuals, so that people can call one single place and be connected into that referral network, and then someone can be deployed to go make contact with that individual and take them to one of the new, now four shelters that'll be online.
Okay.
Councilmember Freeman, if I could just maybe elaborate a little bit more on Mr. Iger's comments. First of all, we can always ask someone to leave. There's nothing illegal about that. What is illegal under the Boise case is to arrest someone for sitting, sleeping, or lying in a public place. If you're looking for a referral pending the app that Ms. Kitchen is talking about, really what you should do is make the referral to the city manager's office, and then that is the purpose behind the green team that the Bakersfield Police Department put together. And they will go out, and they know what the protocol is, and they know individuals at the mission and the homeless center, et cetera, that have, will tell them right away, do you have an available bed? If I don't have an available bed, I cannot arrest for that particular crime. I can arrest for other crimes, but I can't arrest for sitting, sleeping, or lying in public.
Is that it, Bruce?
Hmm.
Councilman Rivera.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have two questions, or two remarks. One is that I think as you move forward, as staff moves forward with, with, I don't know what the term is because I don't remember in the presentation, and the staff memo doesn't really have much info, but whatever it is we're terming the community improvement plans or whatever we're coining them, I would like to be engaged in those discussions. I also think, given that we've now moved past a stage where the city has decided that as a city, we're going to move forward with this particular facility, it is in southeast Bakersfield in Ward 1, and I want to be engaged in your tours. I want to be engaged in your plans. I want to be a part of those discussions and expect an invitation to all of those. I can promise you, I won't be able to attend everything, but I'd certainly like the opportunity to try. I think the other comment I'd make, and I guess it's something that didn't occur to me until just now, and we had our Budget and Finance meeting yesterday, in which we approved funding for two projects, it's become clear to me now, one in Councilmember Gonzalez's district in Ward 2, and one in my district, Ward 1, that are actually directly related, apparently, at least as I'm hearing it now, to the, you know, to the development of two homeless shelters. And I do think, I do think it's inappropriate that we use CDBG dollars that Ward 2 and Ward 1 and Ward 7 could otherwise benefit from for curb gutter sidewalks and other projects in our districts to cover the cost of something we're paying for with Measure N and attempting to deliver on an item that was directly related to Measure N, which was to address and tackle homelessness. This facility is being purchased with Measure N dollars. I think the impacts felt in the communities around it should be paid for with Measure N dollars, and I think that's a burden that should be borne by the entire city, not necessarily just the three districts, or technically four, though I don't think Councilmember Weir's received anything, at least in this last fiscal year. I don't think it should be borne by those districts that I would otherwise still get that money and still be able to use it for projects in their neighborhoods. I just think that's, I think that's a little misleading for me, and I apologize for not catching it yesterday, but I do have to say something now because I just don't think that's actually fair. That's all I have.
Councilmember Gonzalez, any comments?
Just to clarify on that point. So, I was under the impression at Budget and Finance yesterday that there were existing projects or projects that had already been in the works or pre-planned prior to the Calcot decision, and that there is actually an additional plan to, you know, provide additional enhancements to the neighborhood with Measure N dollars. Is that correct, or?
That's correct. So, all of the CDBG projects that were approved in the committee yesterday were continuations of other projects. Just like every year, there's certain neighborhoods, Castro, a couple other come to mind, where each year, we kind of fund and move the needle a little bit further within those neighborhoods, and those are what were recommended yesterday. And in this case, there isn't one in Ward 1 that is, does have close proximity to Calcot, and so that was recommended as a priority, but there are other priority projects. In addition to that, there are Measure N dollars that would be used for the specific infrastructure. infrastructure around the sites, and that was kind of the other part of, that I alluded to with the maps.
I mean, I'm all about more money for infrastructure improvements in Ward 2, so I would, I would back up my colleague here on that. But I just wanted to clarify what exactly what the plan was and, and try to get some...
Absolutely. And what we can do is our next workshop in March, we should have the more, more detail on what the extent of the neighborhood improvements can be, or would be, and we'll bring those forward to the council.
Right. And whether it is supplementing the existing CDBG plans, or if it was...
They're complementary, honestly. I mean, they're generally similar geographic areas.
Okay. And then finally, Councilmember Freeman's idea regarding a hotline, I think, is a really great idea and could be beneficial for the entire community. I do have a question beyond this meeting about the services Flood Ministries is providing and the hours of operation, because many times, oftentimes, we find individuals sleeping on the streets, obviously in the evening, more vulnerable times a day, and I wonder if those outreach services will be available at times that are not normal business hours.
We'll check that and get back to you on that.
Okay. Thank you.
The staff has no further clarification?
Vice Mayor Parlier, Councilmember Gonzalez, to kind of answer some of your questions in regards to the community improvements, what we're looking at on the first phase is improving the perimeters of the both facilities, the Calcott facility and the county's facility, to ensure that there's safety to get to and from the facility on the public streets that are adjacent to it, and reaching out to the transportation network system, Golden Empire Transit, current transit bus stops, making sure there's adequate sidewalks, lighting, crosswalks, things like that that will improve. That will be the first phase, and then we'll start stretching from there to keep enhancing the improvements. But our priority is to make sure that they have adequate access to the facility with sidewalks, curbs, gutters, street lighting, and crosswalks, safety.
And Mr. Fidler makes a good point. So the CDBG dollars, those can only be used in residential neighborhoods. Both Calcott and the county's site are in industrial neighborhoods. So our thought process was use measure N dollars to improve the frontage in those industrial areas that are immediately adjacent to both facilities, then also prioritize this year's CDBG dollars to kind of go beyond that to the adjacent neighborhoods as well.
Councilmember Gonzalez, I'm sorry, Rivera.
Go, let's go ahead and move back in your presentation to at least the map you presented of the area around Calcott. I think it was circled in orange or red. Actually, let's start, let's, let's go to the very beginning of your presentation. I want to see the very first slide.
Yep.
Okay. What is the purpose of, of this particular presentation? What was it, what is, as it's at least been agendized, what is, what's your understanding of the purpose of this presentation?
To provide an update on what we've been working on for the last three weeks.
Related to what?
The council action on January 22nd.
Which was to what?
As laid out here, there were three motions, authorize the approval of the PSA, structure an agreement with the county for $500,000, and prepare neighborhood improvement plans.
I'm, I'm sorry to be difficult, Jackie, but is the PSA not an agreement for land to operate a shelter?
It's a purchase agreement.
To purchase land for what purpose?
For the shelter, yes.
Okay. What is the agreement with the county for $500,000 for?
For, to support their operating costs of their shelter.
Of their shelter. And then what then, in the context of this, at least this first slide, is preparing neighborhood improvement plans?
For the two neighborhoods around the shelters.
Okay. So let's move, can we, can we move ahead back to the aerial you have of, the area around So I just, I want to ensure that I hear Mr. Fidler correct. Where these red arrows point, work is going to be done with measure N dollars?
That's correct.
Okay. And then for the work behind the Calcott facility, within this, I guess it isn't red or orange, it's yellow, all of the work inside of that yellow line will be paid for with CDBG dollars?
That was part of the CDBG-funded area, correct?
Okay. So I guess the reason I made the remark I made earlier is that we're receiving a status update on the city's efforts to address homelessness. Within this presentation is at least one map that shows me a neighborhood improvement plan as a part, as a part of the status update on the city's efforts to address homelessness. And inherent in the presentation is the fact that we are making improvement plans because of a Cal, because of, at least in the context of this aerial photo, improvements, because we are building and constructing a low-barrier navigation center at 1900 East Brundage. I, I have a hard time believing that that's simply a coincidence. I'd also, and I don't have it in front of me, recall that there was at least one other project in Ward 1, and I suspect there was at least one other project in Ward 2 that could have qualified for these dollars, that was, was elsewhere. So again, I just, I just think it's important to provide context here and be honest with what's, what's happening. And what, what is happening is, we are using CDBG dollars to improve the neighborhood adjacent to Calcott because we are building Calcott adjacent to that community. I'm the, I'm going to be the last one to ever say that I don't want to see the improvements there. But I also know that if measure N dollars were used to improve the community around Calcott, I'd have more money to improve another part of southeast Bakersfield, and now I've lost the opportunity to do that in this next fiscal year. That's my point. That's not fair, and we should be honest about what we're actually doing.
I concur with Councilmember Rivera's statements. Couple of things. So as you said, Jackie, this is a huge project. It entails, touches probably every department, potentially every staff member in the city to be able to get the shelter up and running, not to mention the ancillary projects that go with it. I just want to make sure that as we go forward, that we aren't sucking out not only CDBG monies, but other resources that could be providing normal resources to, you know, a city. We're a big city, and we still have to function. So if we have to look at short-term contracts potentially to, you know, do roadwork or some other things, I just want to make sure that, again, those other items that Councilmember and the city staff are concerned about too are neglected. Now with, excuse me, with the CDBG monies, there's an area on Wilson that, that I've talked to Chris Boyle about recently. It's important to me, it's important to the community, and CDBG funds, we're going to be utilized for that, and I think it's important that those funds still remain to be utilized within the areas of the city that they are normally utilized for. So I concur with Councilman Rivera that, that area, for no other reason, is being upgraded, and rightfully so, because of the Calcott facility, that we should look at measure N funds potentially taking care of that too. So as far as, you said you're the point person right now. So being the point person, I think we should look a little bit broader, almost like a traffic control center going forward, like a fusion center, that we have maybe a police officer, code enforcement, looking at heat maps, the kind of same, the same thing that we do with, and I'm just going to use criminal activity, but that's not the right phrase either because we do the same thing with our traffic patterns, and we look at different things. So again, have a coordination within one shop, or there's a unit within the city manager's office, or we call it something, something else, and I don't know if you want that assignment, but that at some point, we do have that unit or section going forward. A quick question for the city attorney regards to Councilmember Freeman's statement. Is there a vehicle code section that prohibits people to panhandle and stuff on the ramps?
Near the on-ramps and off-ramps of the freeways, yes.
Do we enforce that?
My understanding is that CHP enforces it, and Chief may have further comments if our officers do, but I do know that CHP enforces that.
Do we have the ability to enforce it, Chief? He's here.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor. Yes, we do have the ability to enforce violations of the vehicle code. It's primarily the CHP jurisdiction, and most of the complaints regarding that go directly to the CHP, but we have the ability, the authority to enforce it, yes.
Okay, thanks, Chief. So if we get that complaint, and it's directed to the Bakersfield Police Department, I'd like to see that we maybe do some action, or we have maybe stronger coordination with the Highway Patrol to enforce that. That ramp that was specifically mentioned is in my area, but I know other council members that have freeway access via 99, West Side Parkway, or 58, deal with the same matters. Thank you. City Clerk, next item, please. Oh, skipped ahead. Councilman Rivera. Gonzalez.
I'll make a motion to receive and file.
We have a motion? Please cast your votes when ready.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Rivera and Gonzalez and Freeman voting yes.
Well, I'm on the wrong screen here, so...
Are you? Okay. Yes?
It is a yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Under Workshops, we have the Website Redevelopment Update.
Joe, Katie, when you're ready, please proceed. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Joe Conroy. I'm the Public Information Officer for the city. I'm here with Katie Reed from Technology Services. We're going to go through a brief overview of our current or existing website, and also touch a little bit on future changes that will be coming. Before we go too far, this is obviously our main homepage for the city. I'm sure you're all familiar with it. Wanted to mention one thing. If you look at this on a PC or your computer, your laptop, at home or at work, it looks fine. When you pull it up maybe on your mobile device, whether that's your phone or a tablet, it may not play as nicely with that, and, and things maybe get jumbled or look a little awkward. Just a little explanation, that's because when this website was purchased and launched in 2015, mobile device usage was a little different than it is now. It's closer probably to 50/50 than it's ever been, and that was not the case in 2015. And so this site is not optimized for mobile use. Unfortunately, we can't do that at this point with this website, with this content management system. Most content management systems nowadays are actually optimized as mobile-first, which makes it a lot easier for it to convert from one device to the next. Moving on to the overview of the council member pages, this is our main page for the council. When you look at it, it has each member listed, a name, your ward, a photo, some contact information, and also several links. The first thing that somebody may be looking for when they visit the website is the Find Your Council Member link. That's the tool where you can actually search for your address and see what ward you live in. And we moved that actually from the bottom to the top. We wanted to make it as easy as possible for somebody to find, as it may be something that they'd be looking for if they have just moved to the city, or if maybe they've moved around in the city and aren't familiar with which ward they live in. So if it's not something they want to look at, they can actually scroll past pretty quickly, and it doesn't impede their, their visit there. But we'll go ahead and take a look at the Find Your Council Member page. And so this is the map of the city. You can enter in your address, and it will show you where you are and what ward you're in. If you lived here at the council chambers, you'd be in Ward 2, which is Councilmember Gonzalez's ward. And when you click on the information, it brings up that information as well, a photo, and then also, if you click the More Info, it'll take you to the council members' page as well. We also have on the main council page, the city council goals, which were, these, these are the most recent ones, which were approved back in August, or adopted in August of 2019. So anybody who's interested in looking at those can find those on the council page as well. Again, each council member has their basic information and their name and the links there. We actually, Technology Services recently added the links to their names and also to photos on those pages. Previously, it was only in the biography link, which may have been difficult to find at times. This is a little more intuitive. If you come to the website, you can quickly get to the council member page that you're looking for. We've also added the short links to each ward, and that's simply bakersfieldcity.us/ward, and then the number, 1 through 7. If you click 7, it takes you to Vice Mayor Parlier's page here. And if you take a look at that, it has all of the pertinent information, name of your council member, district, or, excuse me, the ward, and contact information. It also has biography provided by the council member, and then any committees and commissions that the council member is on, and other contact information as well. We also have, allow links to external pages, which you can find down there at the bottom, and it'll take you to either Facebook page or a personal website page that is maintained by the council member. As requested by Vice Mayor Parlier, staff has looked at some other California City Council pages to see how they've been designed, and we've tried to come up with some new element, or design element ideas to implement here. And so we actually have a mock, mock-up of one of those. So this looks a little different than the previous page. This is not live on our website, but this is using a lot of the elements that we have at our disposal. So we've used a larger photo that we, that we can use on the page to better see the council members. It also includes the biography that was also on the page. All of the same information, it's just presented a little differently. We included a map of the ward, so you can quickly see what ward looks like compared to the rest of the city. You can zoom in or out, and it will also take you to the information about different locations in that ward. We have all the committees listed on the right-hand side in the bottom. It's a little smaller and off to the side, but it's still presented there. We also have the external website option there as well, so you can still include a website, or a Facebook page, or a Twitter page. We're also including a disclaimer that clicking on those websites will take you to an external non-Bakersfield, a city of Bakersfield-maintained website. Any of those websites would be maintained by the council member and at their discretion. If you don't want a link on there, it doesn't need to be included, but it's an option that we, we can provide. Again, we're limited a little bit on our content management system and what it can do. This is about the extent of what we're able to do, but we felt it was a good stab at a redesign. The full redesign that we would be able to do would take a new content management system, and that would be something that Katie Reed can discuss. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, members of the council, Katie Reed, Technology Systems Supervisor for the Data Management Team. the data management team. Joe has covered some of, hasn't covered the improvements that we can do currently. Now I'd like to talk very briefly about other changes that will be coming. This budget cycle, your council approved funds for a website redevelopment, and we have begun the process of selecting a vendor for this project. The goal is to create a website that better incorporates the city's new branding, modernizes the look and feel of our site, and adds more robust functionality to meet our citizens' growing expectations. This includes things like better integration with social media platforms, and the ability to take advantage of new emerging technologies. Staff has reviewed multiple municipal websites as part of this process. In the coming months, we will review vendor proposals and presentations, and select a product that best meets the city's needs and requirements. This will take time, but our goal is to have a contract ready for your approval before the end of this fiscal year. And with that, Joe and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
And Vice Mayor and councilmembers, again, there may be public that want to comment on this item, so just remember to see if anyone wants to comment before you discuss.
Thank you, Richard. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Public comments, please.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you both for your presentation this afternoon. I just had a question. You mentioned that you had visited other municipal websites. I wondered what sites you really liked and preferred, and what we're looking at in terms of our goal here.
Actually, I believe I will have to credit Vice Mayor Parlier. One of the websites that we really liked was Anaheim, and it was one of the sites that, when he brought his referral to the city manager's office, he suggested we look at. Another one that recently went live, maybe a year ago, a couple of years ago, was Beverly Hills. They have some really nice visual features. Most of the sites we looked at, the focus is on visual with language and wording being a secondary thing. A lot of the websites are regular scrolling sites, because they are mobile-first, and on your phone, that's what you do, is you scroll. So where this one here, you'll notice, is really short, most new cities are now going with one that you continue to scroll down, and it's in sections on a single page that transfer over.
Yeah, I imagine it's a matter of both form and function, and to that, I wonder how we will integrate the Bakersfield mobile app and the applications that exist there with the website.
Integrations with the Bakersfield mobile app is a third party.
Right.
So once we've found the vendor we're going to go with, we will work with that vendor to seamlessly integrate for a complete visual look on that. So that will be something that will be addressed when we choose our vendor.
Yeah, I guess my point is that it is, using the Bakersfield mobile app is very convenient. I use it all the time to report regular issues, everyday issues, graffiti, whatnot, potholes. And I wondered if the same functions will be available on the website for a user to report, straightforward, easily defined, easy to find on the website?
Yes, it will. Very similar to what we have now. It will most likely continue to use the Bakersfield mobile product, but we will, as we've done with our current website, we will integrate that in, so that they have the option to do it on their phone, or do it through the city's website. We will continue to look at quick links, so that citizens can click in one place and get there quickly, rather than having to filter through multiple pages before they find a place to report an issue.
Great, thank you. City Member to public, wish to make a comment on this item?
Good afternoon. My name is Adi Yinka Glover, and I am an attorney at Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. I just wanted to comment on the website and proposed changes moving forward. As you're aware, we did submit a Brown Act violation letter on January 1st, sorry, January 6th of this year, and one of the things we included was that there was no prominent link to the Board of Supervis, sorry, City Council Agenda items directly on the homepage that would comply with the statute. And specifically, it's California Government Code 54954.2. And so we would like to ask how the changes to the website would make sure that there is a prominent link to either the direct current agenda, or to the integrated menu for the agendas. Thank you.
Thank you. If staff can just follow up with her and get any further comments. Katie, Joe, I'd like to thank you so much for your presentation. What this does, you know, as we become a large city, or are a large city, it just helps us integrate better with our constituents. It gives a menu to councilmembers that they can, you know, do as little or as much as they want and engage. I love having the map on the page with it, because I get that question sometimes from constituents, hey, how do I get the map? So again, thank you so much for your presentation.
Vice Mayor, council, we need a motion to receive and file.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith, do you make a motion, please?
Thank you. Move to receive and file.
We have a motion to receive and file.
Motion is approved.
Next item, please.
Also under workshops, we have the bicycle and pedestrian safety plan for the city
Councilmembers, Vice Mayor, my name is Sam Corbett, and I'm a principal with Alta Planning and Design, and I served as the project manager, working for the city on the city's bicycle pedestrian safety plan. This was a one-year-long project that we worked with various city departments, including Public Works, Traffic Engineering, Planning Department, as well as representatives from KernCog. So initially, we, do I have the ability to advance the slides here, or how does that work? Okay, great. Thanks, Nick. So this project started by looking, collecting six years' worth of crash data throughout the city. We worked both with the police department, as well as using statewide collision data, referred as SWITERS. So we initially were reconciling the data, making sure we had a complete data set of all collision data between 2013 and 2018. So six years' worth of data. We mapped all of the data and analyzed it for various attributes related to roadway characteristics, related to fault in the collisions, looking at other attributes of the collisions, you know, whether it was light, it was dark, looking at causes, et cetera. And one of the key findings is that pedestrians and bicyclists are disproportionately represented in collisions throughout the city of Bakersfield. So from a commuting perspective, bicyclists and pedestrians represent less than 1% of all commuters within the city. However, from 11% of overall collisions involve a pedestrian, and this was in the six-year period in the city of Bakersfield, and it's 8.5% of collisions involve a cyclist in the city. So as I mentioned, they're disproportionately represented. So this was the, this is just the actual facts here. Eleven bicyclists were killed in the city during this six-year period, and 588 were Eighty-six pedestrians were killed during this six-year period, 757 were injured. So the other key point here is not only are pedestrians and bicyclists sort of overrepresented in these collisions, they're also obviously much more vulnerable in these collisions, right? Because they're just out, they don't have metal box around them, so when things do happen, they're, they tend to either get seriously injured or killed, and a much higher percentage of the, either seriously injured or killed accidents involve pedestrians or bicyclists throughout the city. A couple other key findings in our analysis, I mentioned that we looked at the collisions by time of day. So during nighttime or dark conditions, that was, that was when many of the fatal collisions happened. So that was a key attribute, 74% to be precise. Two other factors that were particularly concerning was speeding and DUI. So you can see the chart to the left here, particularly as it relates to pedestrians. We had DUI was a contributing factor in 40% of the pedestrian collisions, and unsafe speed was a factor in 35% for pedestrians. So those were two significant factors in our analysis, looking at fault. Another, I mentioned day versus night. This shows whether or not it was, this is combined pedestrian and bicyclist data. So the nighttime collisions, you can see much higher percentages of fatalities and severe injuries at night. So 11% of overall ped bike, total collisions were fatal at night versus, you know, 17%, which was the severe injuries. So these were, these were just the overall trends of, that we found from the data. We also had an extensive public engagement effort as part of this project. This included workshops, pop-up events. We had a project website that we had live for a number of months throughout the study effort. Initially, we were just seeking feedback on concerns that people had about walking and biking throughout the city. So this was our first workshop, where we received considerable feedback on citizens' concerns about their safety. We also had a project website that included an interactive map, in which people could go online, log a concern or suggestion about improving pedestrian or bicyclist safety on the site. The city made a concerted effort to promote this site. In fact, Ed Murphy was on the news on at least a couple of different occasions promoting this site, and I have to say, I think it was that effort and the amount of media attention that the site received that resulted in the amount of responses that we received through the site. We received close to 240 responses through the public on the site. The nature of the feedback that we received had to do with improved crossings, addressing unsafe speeds, improved bicycle facilities, particularly north-south connections throughout the city, improved lighting, and sort of other spot improvements that were requested, more enforcement. But we have all of this data and this sort of factored into the development of recommendations that came out of the safety plan. We also attended the Third Thursday event in October, in which we presented some of our draft recommendations and concept designs at this event, seeking feedback, input from the public. We decided to do this one, rather than have a traditional workshop, in which case we often struggle to get the turnout. So this one is already an existing event, and we had a considerable amount of foot traffic stopping by at our tent for this event. Okay, so following the collection of the data, we completed a systemic safety analysis, and this was looking at all of the hotspot corridors, the concentration of collisions. As you probably aren't surprised by, the collisions tended to be concentrated on major arterials, four-to-six-lane roadways that have higher traffic speeds, posted speeds, typically in excess of 35 miles an hour. Also, we were looking at different characteristics of these corridors, factors such as the lighting conditions, intersection treatments, whether or not there were posted and actual crosswalks at intersections, distance between intersections, and other attributes of that nature. And we also looked at various, like I said, the public feedback that we received, to make sure that it wasn't just about the data analysis, but that we were also capturing feedback from the public about their concerns. And as I mentioned earlier, more than 50% of our ped bike collisions were in these 20 corridors that emerged from the study effort. So we then went from the 20 corridors, so this particular slide here shows the data by these 20 corridors. The red bar is the ped bike crashes, and the gray bar is the motor vehicle-only crashes. So as you can see, Union Avenue, for instance, is far and above the corridor with the highest number of pedestrian bicycle crashes on it. You can see 120 over this six-year period. But there are, you know, there are also a lot of other motor vehicle crashes. So there are other corridors, say Chester Avenue, for instance, that didn't have nearly as many collisions, but on a percentage basis constituted a much higher percentage of the ped bike collisions compared to the overall collisions. So we then went through a process of winnowing down the 20, these 20 corridors, down to eight, because our scope of work was to develop concept designs and 30% engineering plans for improving safety on these corridors. So we worked with our committee, as I mentioned, city staff and KernCog staff, also the members of the police department, and we selected these eight corridors for the concept designs and the 30% design plans. I should note that in this process, it was, it was a combination of finding the corridors that were in greatest need for pedestrian bicycle safety, but it was also finding representative corridors. So the treatments that we developed for these eight corridors, while they are specific and particular to the corridors, they're also intended to be useful and replicable for other corridors with similar characteristics throughout the city. So what I mean by that is that we wanted to have a good representation of corridors throughout the city, that some arterial, some collectors, we picked a traffic circle, we had different attributes that were intended to sort of get just greater value to the city, that they could then take the design treatments that we developed through this plan and apply them citywide. And then at the conclusion, as I mentioned, we developed these, these concept designs and 30% plans. So this shows a protected cycleway on Monterey Street. So this is, you can see, it actually is a parking-protected cycleway. So the cyclist in this situation is one-way street, so they're riding in the bike lane there. They have physical protection. This is one of the issues in most of the bike lanes throughout Bakersfield, is there isn't any physical protection. It's just paint on a road. So this actually would provide the cyclist with that physical protection. So this actually would provide the cyclist with that physical protection. Green paint through the intersections, that's conflict striping to just, you know, alert motorists of the presence of cyclists riding through there. Curb extensions is also a number of pedestrian safety improvements to reduce the, the distance that pedestrians have to walk to get from, you know, one side of the street to the other. Also slows traffic down by, by sort of narrowing the overall corridor there for vehicular traffic, high-visibility crosswalks. And then again, on Union Avenue, we had a number of treatments ranging from the, the conflict striping at intersections and driveways to just provide greater visibility for cyclists. We didn't have the, the ability to put in protected bike lanes here just because of a number of factors. One, the ADT on Union Avenue. Most, much of Union Avenue is also under Caltrans jurisdiction, so we were limited in that regard. And also just as sort of a different environment, different context, but we are providing the safest possible treatment considering the roadway characteristics of this corridor. Again, high-visibility crosswalks at the intersections. We also are proposing a hawk signal at one location on, on Union Avenue, which is, sort of improves pedestrian safety. We also developed cost estimates for all these improvements, ranging from $750,000 for the Garcia's Memorial Circle improvements, all the way up to, I think the most expensive was 4.78 million for the California Avenue corridor improvements. And then next steps for the city would be to take the, the 30% design plans that we developed as part of the study effort and apply for grant funding to move that forward further to 100% design and actual construction of the projects. And, and as I mentioned earlier, also start applying the, the treatments that are proposed here. We only did eight corridors, but apply those, those treatments to other corridors throughout the city to sort of achieve the intended effect. That's the conclusion of my presentation. I open it up for any questions.
Thank you. Colleagues, are there any questions?
And Mayor, remember, we're going to open this up for public comments as well if anyone is here to speak.
That's correct. Thank you very much. Public, is there anybody who would like to speak on this topic? Welcome. Please introduce yourself and go ahead.
Hi, everyone. My name is Asha Chandy. I'm the Programs Manager for Bakersfield. I just wanted to thank the city, especially Ed and Alta, for conducting this study. Any improvements and plans to increase bicycling and pedestrian safety is positive for everyone involved, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to speak? Thank you. Then I'm going to return it to council now for a comment. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just ask staff, what's, the next steps are to apply for grants? What types of grants and what's the real opportunity? And, and do we go to full design without grants or how, where do we really go from here?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Smith, yes, there are three types of grants that we can think of right now. Two of these, or two to three of these projects actually fall into our transformative climate communities, which we're currently setting up for. So we will be adding that into the program. There is also active transportation program grants and then HSIP program grants. So that's what projects we'll be applying for as they come up through their cycles. To start a design of that nature, they're, they're pretty straightforward, they're on a long lead time design. So we'd probably add that into the grant because it could all be completed within a year's timeline. The environmental is just a categorical exemption, so we don't have to apply for anything like that. So it's, we'd apply for it during the grant cycle.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Nick, at some of the problem intersections, do we have sound-assisted crosswalks at any of those?
Vice Mayor Parley, yes, we do have sound-assisted crosswalks throughout the community. We do have a list of crosswalks that have been requested and we are applying for a grant to complete that request as well. We do have minor amount of funds each year that we do apply for, or we do install the systems, but we are looking to seek for a, a grant to convert several of them. Now that we've converted a lot of the, all of these signal timers to a countdown-type signal, our next goal is to start adding additional audible signals.
I was in Manhattan Beach not that long ago and it was a non-controlled crosswalk, but they had for the pedestrian where you can, you know, hit the little button and then LED lights come on at the pedestrian crosswalk signs. I don't think that's historically something that we've used in a city. Is that something maybe we could look at to do at problem intersections or maybe certain school zones?
That's, that's new technology that Caltrans has been proving, so we are looking at HSIP grants for that type of installation as well. It's still relatively expensive because it is new. So those are programs we are looking at to do as well, one of them being on Chester Avenue as part of the TCC grant as well.
Okay, thanks, Nick.
Thank you, colleagues. Any other requests to speak? If not, Vice Mayor?
Motion to receive and file.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Also under workshops, Item D, Better Bakersfield Initiative.
Thank you, Ms. Chenar.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier this morning, we received an email from the chamber indicating that they were withdrawing their request for a contribution. So after any public comment or council comment, we can move on to the next item. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council comment on this item? Right. I don't see anybody. We, Councilmember Smith. Sorry, Councilmember Freeman.
Just a question. Is there an explanation of why, Ms. Ortiz? Is it coming back in a different form or are there going to be discussions and all modified requests, kind of what's going on?
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Nick Ortiz, representing the Greater Bakersfield Chamber. That's exactly right. I think after discussions with some of your colleagues on the council and staff in the last few days, we thought it best to have more comprehensive discussions with staff and return with this item at a future date with potentially a modified request.
From the little I learned when Nick called me, it sounded like an interesting project or study, you know, about economic development and a plan, but it sounded like a great project for our new city manager to jump. No, I'm serious.
Agreed.
I would, I would really like to see, since he'll be here soon, the new city manager be involved in whatever discussions would move forward on this, because it'd be something that potentially get his teeth into. And, you know, I thought the goal was a good one. I just thought, you know, this would be a great thing to get him involved in.
And I think we're thinking along the same lines, Councilmember Freeman. I think that we also thought that the coming of a new permanent city manager probably was best to wait on any formal request to your council and return at a future date.
Thanks.
Thank you. And thank you to staff.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman and Mr. Ortiz. Any other requests to speak? Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please. Oh, there you go. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to reinforce that I appreciate the chamber's efforts and do look forward to the council and the chamber working together on, on vision and economic development. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Anyone else? Madam Clerk.
Under closed session, we have a conference with legal counsel for existing litigation regarding Norris Wayne Kemp Sr. versus Joshua Kelvin Sigenza Peña.
Thank you.
Move to closed session.
We are moving now to closed session. And, public, just so you know, it looks like unless this moves along really quickly in closed session, we might be a few minutes late in coming back out for the 5:15. But thank you for your patience. We're adjourned to closed session.